Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the special city council meeting to order. First thing on the agenda, as always, is determination of a quorum. Amber Feud, please call the roll.
Quaker?
Here.
Olson? Kroger? Costello?
Here.
Hadcock?
Here.
LaCroy?
Here.
Martinson?
Yeah.
Wyffenbach?
Here.
Okrupke?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Since this is a special council meeting, there are only two things on the agenda. And just so you know, by state statute, nothing can be added to the agenda at a special council meeting. And so we'll turn to, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker to read in number one. That is an ordinance. If you could just read that in so we can get us going here.
I have number one, is second reading of ordinance 5479. An ordinance implementing the recommendations for the Downtown Revitalization Task Force and Downtown Parking Committee by adopting parking regulations for certain areas of Rapid City by amending chapter 10.44 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, Yield to the Floor.
Do we have a motion, so we could proceed, please? Just for discussion.
Move for approval for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion, second for approval for discussion. With that, I thought, before we started going into the speaker request forms, I think it would be appropriate if JJ could just give us an update. And sort of, I know we've seen this presentation, so he'll skip through the PowerPoint, the first part of it, very quickly. But I think it's important so everybody knows exactly where we're at, because we do have an amended ordinance in front of us, and that way, everybody knows where we're starting. JJ?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. This is a presentation that was put together by Monica Heller and the Downtown Parking Committee. Just to give a quick overview of how we got here. The 1949 plan identified deficiencies in off-street parking in our business district. In 1978, council created a parking district, and properties within that district were assessed a parking fee. Total assessment has been $500,000 to date. In 1991, again, we recommended that we do improved management of all spaces downtown. And then in 2007, a parking committee was formed as part of the Downtown Revitalization Task Force. We held an open house, June 24th, 2008, began taking public comments. The parking plan was approved by the City Center Revitalization Task Force on June 27th. And then the plan was presented to legal finance on July 16th, 2008, and then the council, July 21st, 2008. A special city council meeting was held September 29th to receive more public comment regarding the plan. And then the legal finance committee and the city council requested the mayor create a new task force to review the recommendations and come forward with a new plan. This new plan was presented December 5th, December 19th, or we met December 5th, December 19th, and January 5th. And then a special council meeting was held February 26th to include the ordinance that provided for meters throughout the downtown area. Again, the downtown parking goal is to meet the current needs of stakeholders and generate future revenues for future parking solutions. Future parking solutions are deemed to be parking ramps, and the downtown parking must also create the perception of convenient parking for all. The downtown parking plan as it stands right now includes free 15 minutes on all parking meters. The meters or posts will be colored to differentiate between the different time limits. Each meter will have the availability of parking cards. We'll have kiosks throughout the downtown area, so people can purchase the cards, have money balances on the cards. Cards will be able to be used on all meters. The different costs for the meters, two-hour meters will be 50 cents an hour, four-hour meters, 25 cents an hour, and the 10-hour meters will be 12 and a half cents per hour. Enforcement will be maintained from 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Saturday. In any un-metered spots, we would be looking at a graduated fine system. Where one free ticket in the first 180 days, second ticket would be $10, third ticket 15, fourth ticket would be $20. And then again, you'd have to be ticket-free 180 days for the count to start over. One of the issues that we dealt with quickly, or had to deal with, was residential permits and allowing people that live in the downtown area to purchase these permits. The cost of the permit would be $40 a month, which is the same as the covered leased parking in those areas. And then owner-occupied residences may purchase an annual fee for $15. The annual permit will be renewed every year with a required documentation. Those requirements would be driver's license, proof of residency, vehicle registration. And then the location would be up to three streets or three blocks adjacent to the selected address. It's just a quick picture of the proposed meters. As you can see, it has the 15-minute free button, also has the slot for the prepaid parking card. This is the map showing where the different time meters would be. The yellow shows two-hour meters. The blue zones show the four-hour meters, and the red zones show the 10-hour meters. Cost of the plan for the meters. Meters accessories would be $890,000. We purchased two scooters for parking enforcement staff, four kiosks for the purchase of the prepaid cards, and then post-installation for a grand total of $1.12 million. The projected revenue from all these meters is estimated at $747,000. Enforcement is expected to generate $90,000 for a total of $837,000 a year. With that revenue, we would be able to bond out a $10 million bond with a term of 20 years, 6 percent rate. And then annual debt service on that would be $852,000. How will we fund the plan? The parking meters are anticipated to cost the 1.12. There's currently $2.8 million in the 2012 fund that was set aside for downtown parking improvements. 1.12 of that could be used to fund the parking meters, with the additional 1.6 million being used for a new parking structure in the downtown area. Where will the additional revenue from the meters be spent? All revenue generated will be maintained in the parking lot and area enterprise fund. It'll pay for additional parking structures. It'll pay for the maintenance of the parking, and it'll pay for the enforcement of the parking. And that will all be within the downtown parking district. The downtown parking committee's recommendation is that we approve ordinance number 5479. Appoint a downtown parking manager, and appoint a long-term parking solution committee.
Thank you, JJ. Just a reminder, if you do have a cellphone or pager, if you'd please turn it off. If you're interested, you can join me, because I'm buying donuts in the morning, because my wife just called me. That's whose cellphone went off. And so, 8 o'clock. You better drum me down to Jerry's, because that's where we're buying them at. Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay. Unless there's any questions, as far as what is currently the proposal for any of the council members? If so, please turn on your light. If not, then we will actually go out to public comment. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. Do have a couple of questions for JJ. This proposal, how many new parking meters would we install? It's a little over 1,000, am I not correct?
Yeah, it's close to 1,200 new meters throughout the downtown area.
And that 1,200 excludes Main and St. Joe, correct?
No, this plan is, the plan as amended, which includes Main and St. Joe.
Okay, so this 1,200 meters is for Main and St. Joe also?
Correct.
Okay. Then, another question I have is why the difference in hours? What is the purpose of the difference in hours for the parking meters?
The difference in the purpose of hours is to differentiate the prime spots. Your two-hour meters are the areas where you want the highest turnover of parking. You also want that to be the most expensive parking, because it's the most preferred. Creating the most expensive parking in that core area results in a higher turnover. The hope is that people that are long-term parkers or will be using the parking space for a long term will go to the outlying areas.
Which is, which is the four and 10-hour parking.
Correct. And it would then be a cheaper rate. You know, 50 cents an hour versus 12 and a half cents an hour. It adds up for those people that are working or spending a great deal of time in that downtown. It makes it more advantageous for them to use the 10-hour meters.
One other question, Mayor. My assumption would be then, is actually the main purpose of the longer time limit on the meters is to have a place for the employees to park. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. JJ, I just had a question on, do we know, you know, there's been a lot of talk that saying downtown was free parking, but there is revenue generated from the two-hour parking, you know, the $5 fine and so forth. Do we know what that income is right now?
I know it's available. I don't have it as part of this presentation. But yes, there is, there is income generated off of the enforcement activity in the two-hour area.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, or maybe two, maybe one leads to another. The first question I would ask is, when this parking plan was put together, looking at the philosophy of four-hour parking, two-hour parking, 10-hour parking, what makes one business more important than another person's business? Say, if you're parking four, 10 hours, all in front of one person's business, how is that person going to feel about having people parking there? I mean, what's the philosophy behind it, I guess?
JJ?
Well, the parking committee, when we, when we sat down and we differentiated where the different time limits would be, the parking committee's recommendation was for the two-hour free zone on Main and St. Joseph Street, being the most optimum, being the most close to the core of downtown, and requesting that that be the highest turnover. With the two-hour free, we can expect a higher turnover rate, because people actually have to move from the spot. So, the hope was, by the parking committee, was that we would be creating a high-turnover area on Main and St. Joseph Street and 6th and 7th Street in that core area. Then, from there, it's just a convenience aspect. From that core area, one block out, we were looking at the four-hour meters. And then more blocks out from that would be the 10-hour meters.
I understand that part of it. I just don't understand the philosophy of how one person's business, just because they're not on Main and St. Joe, or one block, or maybe they're two blocks away. How come their business would be challenged with a 10-hour parking meter? That's the part of the philosophy I'm having a hard time understanding. I'm trying to grasp what part of that I'm missing.
The parking committee did not look at it on the aspect of what meter's going to be in what specific business. We didn't look at it as a business per business. We didn't say, well, this business caters to a long-term employee, so there should be longer-term meters in front of their business. What we looked at it was the general consensus, trying to keep some organization to the meters, so that we could avoid the current problem where we have now, where one side of a street has two-hour free parking, the other side has meters, while around the corner, there's no regulated parking at all. This plan was to provide a uniformity for the entire parking area in the downtown area.
Anything else, Ron?
The other question, was it ever taken into account, on certain areas of Main and St. Joe, there's not competing businesses across the street from each other? I mean, there's areas of Main and St. Joe that have virtually across the street from them. Say, if you're in the heart of Main and St. Joe, say, like, close to 6th Street in that area, say, on Main, or whatever, and there's a high-density level of businesses there. If you, as you go out on Main and St. Joe, there's areas there that have parking and no competing businesses. So they're not competing for all those same parking spots. Was that ever taken into account, or?
No, again, again, we weren't looking at it on a business-related perspective. It was all based on providing some continuity to our current parking plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just a couple of questions on some of the residential stuff. When did we come up with the 40-hour meter on, or 40-hour a month on leases and the 50-hour a month on owner-occupied? Because I was on that committee, and I don't remember us coming up with the $15 a month for owner-occupied.
That was at our final meeting that the committee met. We discussed the owner-occupied being, being at that $15 annual rate versus somebody who's renting, needing a leased lot at the 40-hour leased lot rate.
And I was there, but I don't remember the discussion on the owner-occupied part. I only remember the $40 leasor part. So, I was trying to figure out why they would be any different. Okay. And then my other question was, when we did residential passes, and we have owner-occupied houses in there, how are we going to do those houses for people that actually own houses in our parking zone?
Those owner-occupied would be the $15 annual rate to get the one permit for the residents, so that they could park there.
Per year?
Per year.
So we're going to charge people that have lived there for 30, 40 years, $15 a month? Or year, I'm sorry.
If people want to park on the street, most of the residences in that area that we looked at had the availability of off-street parking for at least one vehicle. So if there was a need for a second vehicle to be parked on the street, they could pay the $15 annual fee to be out on the street.
Thank you. That would answer my question. Thank you, JJ.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. JJ, I have three questions. First, your presentation stated that there were two committees. Do you have the roster available of who was involved on each of those?
Now, just for point of clarification, there were actually not two parking committees. There was a long, there was a standing committee that was made up of about 40 different people, which was part of the downtown revitalization. But at a council meeting, Alderman Chapman asked that we form a task force to review those recommendations. So there weren't two separate committees looking at this.
Thank you for clearing that up, Mr. Mayor. If you have that handy, I'd love to see you carrying. And JJ, my other two are sort of coattailing Alderwoman Hadcock's questions on the $15 and $40 rentals. How many owner-occupied residents, residences are there in this area?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Do you know how many leased there are?
Again, it would depend on how many people are living in the apartment complexes that are above a lot of the businesses downtown and things like that, so.
Okay. So were those two figures included in the revenue calculations?
No, those numbers were not calculated into our revenue projections.
Okay. That's all. Thanks.
I do not see any additional lights, so I think we'll go ahead, excuse me, and start. Okay, we'll give everybody an opportunity, and then, okay, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to know about the presentation. I mean, we've seen it a few times, but it seems, unless I missed it, that's not linked on with the agenda tonight, or is it? I have a copy of the presentation, but it's changed since the one that I have. So I'd like for the council to be able to get a copy of the presentation, or if there are further meetings about parking, then I'd like for it to be linked from this point forward.
We make that happen. Alderman Chapman, the only thing actually that's unlinked is actually just the maps. The PowerPoint is not linked, but we can certainly get that linked. Okay? Any additional comments? If not, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. JJ, at the last meeting, I asked about the programming capability of the reset button, or the free 15 minutes, and how it works if, let's say, there's six minutes left, whether someone that pulls into that spot then can reset it so they can get the full 15, or if they're just out of luck.
Nope. If somebody else comes in and wants to push that button, it resets to the full 15 minutes.
Okay, so is it a motion detector that determines that, or is it?
No, it's a button, it's just a button on the meter. If you had somebody that wanted to go out and push that button every 15 minutes, they would end up staying in that spot for free.
That was my question.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just a question on the posts for $170,000 on the meters. Is that putting double meters on, or a post for each parking spot?
That is for single posts. The estimate was done for single posts for each meterhead, not putting the twin adapters on.
Okay, is there any reasoning why we didn't put twin adapters on there?
Depending on where the parking areas are, depending on what type of parking is there, sidewalk configuration, things like that, we wanted to make sure that the plan provided for enough posts for each meter. In areas where we can do the twin adapters, obviously, we'd like to use those twin adapters. But it's going to be specific to that area of town.
So we have both? So we can use twin adapters and regular? We're not just doing singles? Thank you, JJ.
Ted?
Question, sir?
Go ahead.
I think when we want to ask questions, it's going to be hard to do, just to speak twice thing tonight for city council members. So, if I could recommend, I don't know how we, like we did the other night, if we could just speak freely or suspend the rules.
Why don't we see if we get there, and if we need to, we can.
Thank you.
Okay, and let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that, being brought up that we maybe need to suspend the rules, because as we go, and the questions come up more. I have a question in consideration of the philosophy of pricing these meters. If a ramp costs 40 bucks a month, is that correct, JJ?
Correct.
Then why would, why would we take a 10-hour meter to 12 and a half cents? What's the philosophy behind that?
The philosophy of the 12 and a half cent meter was to make it affordable and at the same price of a lot of our available parking in the leased lots. We currently, before the third level was put on the parking ramp, we had a waiting list for the leased parking.
Sure.
And so the whole idea was those long-term 10-hour meters, we wanted it cost-effective and in comparison with other long-term parking solutions that are in the downtown area.
I just did some quick calculations, and somebody may be better than I am. But if a person parked there 10 hours a day for 20 days, that'd be about 25 bucks a month.
Correct.
That's 15 bucks less than a parking ramp.
Correct.
So we're encouraging these people to park in these 10-hour meters in front of other people's businesses. That's the way I would kind of read this.
Ron, just for point of clarification, the $40 we keep talking about is for covered lots?
Right.
We have surface lots arranged from 25 to 30 dollars. That's what the average price of a parking, leased parking, that is not covered in Rapid City.
That would be like at the top of the third level of the ramp, it's 25 bucks?
Or the other surface lots in town.
I'm just looking for the philosophy. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I think we'll go ahead and start with the speaker request forms. We have a number of those. Just a reminder, if you do want to speak tonight, we have speaker request forms. They're on the table to your left, to our right, and they look like this. If you could fill those out with your name. And we really don't need items tonight, because there's only two on there. And just a request, if you could actually print legibly some of these names, I will tell you. I can't hardly read the last name, so I'll do my best as we go through here. First one is Mary Rinca, 528 Quincy Street. Now, just a reminder for everyone, we do time this period. If you would watch the lights up here, we allow two minutes for everyone. And so when the light does turn yellow, that means you have about 30 seconds left. And if it does turn red, we just ask you to very quickly wrap up your comments. Thank you.
What an education this has been. I really appreciate it.
And I'm sorry, one other thing I'll remind everybody as you come up. If you could just please identify yourself for the record.
Mary Rinca, Black Hills Psychiatry Associates, 528 Quincy Street. It seems to me, listening to all of this, that this is all about the employees' parking in the free parking in Main and St. Joe. We're not in the 1978 parking district. We're out on Quincy Street. Yet, our two-hour meters are going to cost our patients double what they're costing now. It's going to go from 25 cents to 50 cents an hour. I don't think that's fair. Sounds to me like you've got enough funds in the 2012 funds to build a new parking ramp. So what is this all about? And then I heard that the two-hour parking is the most preferred. And two-hour parking on Quincy? I mean, I'm in favor of the two-hour parking, don't get me wrong. It was 10-hour, and that would have closed us down. But we're on Quincy Street. We're quite a ways from the downtown core area. Why are we having to pay double the rate? And I think Alderman Costello was trying to make a point that I've been trying to make. The task force was made up, from what I can see, of predominantly owners or their representatives on Main and St. Joe. We were not asked to contribute to this plan. We were not, until it would all hit the fan. And then we were allowed to contribute. We would be happy to sit down and work out an equitable solution. I don't think this task force plan is an equitable solution. I'm very opposed to it. I really appreciate all the time that's been put into it. I've been at most of the meetings. I appreciate all the time you guys have put into it, and I appreciate the wonderful questions that you all ask. I'm just asking you to please look at it as a whole, and I don't believe it's an equitable plan at all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We also have a speaker request form from James Taylor at 240 East Charles Street. And there again, I'll remind a number of you, just if you could identify yourself for the record.
James Taylor, I have the building at 612 St. Joe. I wanted to speak to Ward One's comments. And that's that if we have a parking manager, if we have an actual formula for downtown parking, where the parking is distributed by the, with that formula, meaningly that because somebody is far out, farther out, that their parking spaces don't go to waste, that we have an actual formula that says that by data collecting, that we see that which parking spaces are being used, how often, and a parking manager that can actually implement these things on an ongoing basis, where when we see defects in it, like, for instance, on Kansas City Street is being as empty right now, most of the time, we see defects, that these could be taken care of. What we really need for this is a parking manager, a professional parking manager, that comes up with a professional formula that satisfies, that isn't against any particular business, that if a business has a parking spot in front of it that they're not using, that that parking spot is used. This is what would be my only viewpoint. Also, I would like to see this passed without the amendment, without the amendment for downtown. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We also have a speaker request form from Charlie Ray, 703 Quincy Street.
Charlie Ray, 703 Quincy Street. My main problem is that this plan still leaves 10-hour meters in front of our building. This will very badly impact our business. It seems wrong to try to help other businesses at the expense of others. I got some suggestions for you. One of the things that you could do to save a little money, perhaps maybe have some money left over for the school music program, leave all the existing meters the way they are. They work just fine. Our two-hour meters are just what we need. If you have problems with employees parking downtown in the two-hour free spaces, employers should set policy for employment, no parking in the two-hour free spaces. Employers can do that. That'll solve that problem. Add new meters as you need them. You don't have to spend all this money on these high-tech meters. Some property owners need meters in front of their business. Kurt Weitzel's one of them, but you're going to put 10-hour meters in front of his place, too. He needs two-hour meters. He should be able to say, "I need two-hour meters, not 10-hour meters." Kiosks to sell parking cards is unnecessary. City Hall is right here, right downtown. Anybody can come right down to City Hall and buy parking cards, if you must have the city in the business of selling parking cards. Otherwise, stick to old-fashioned money. These new high-tech meters are going to be high-tech for a very short time. And then there'll be a higher-tech meter, hopefully one that's solar-powered, that doesn't waste batteries, and put them into the landfill and pollute the rest of the environment with. Just some suggestions for you. Seems like my two minutes should be up by now. Thank you for all for being here and for all your dedication to being on the council.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. We also have a speaker request form. And just, you know, one of the things, and I know everybody's been very polite tonight, but just, you know, one of the things that we do do is we keep a very tight control on the decorum in this. So, as people get up, whether you support the current plan, the amended plan or no plan, what we'd ask you to do is not to applaud or react in any way to any one of the speakers. So, if you would show respect to... the speakers. So if you would, uh, show respect to, uh, to the council and also to those in the audience. Next on the speaker request form is Larry Bloty, seven oh one Main Street.
Sure you'd call me up after Charlie was up, you know, that's a tough act to follow. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Larry Bloty. I've lived in Ward Five here in Rapid City for the last thirty-eight years. I represented Ward Five on the council from nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-three. Our family owns real estate on Main Street as well as some residential properties. Our family has had a downtown business presence for over thirty-two years. I'm here tonight to talk about parking as it relates to proposed ordinance fifty-four seventy-nine as amended. On December twenty-ninth, nineteen seventy-seven, the Rapid City Council passed a resolution for public parking facilities, with January sixteenth, nineteen seventy-eight set as the time for adoption. This resolution called for the levying of assessments against the properties to be benefited. The resolution of necessity for the condemnation of certain lands for public parking for six parcels was proposed on January sixteenth, nineteen seventy-eight. This was to provide off-street parking to help in competition with the new Rushmore Mall. Project costs of one-point-one million to, were to be paid by a forty-five percent assessment against the benefited property owners, three percent from the city and fifty-two percent from federal grants. In exchange for the property assessment, parking zones were established under Rapid City Code twenty-eight dash one fifty-two. A two-hour parking zone was established in the area bordered by Fourth Street to Ninth Street, railroad tracks to the alley between St. Joe and Kansas City, as outlined in twenty-eight dash one fifty-two parentheses one. A two-hour zone was to have meters removed, and the intended outcome was that area was to remain meter-free forever. In May of nineteen seventy-eight, this became a reality. The meters were removed, and the two-hour area has remained meter-free ever since. I have talked to two of the Aldermen who were involved with the nineteen seventy-eight council action, and the head of the Downtown Association at that time. All three of these folks, former Alderman Babe Steinberg, former Alderman Richard Goschke, and Downtown Association President Pete Garmen, have told me that meters were never again to be installed in the two-hour parking zone. This agreement was due to the property owner's assessment. Ordinance fifty-four seventy-nine is currently amended, is in direct opposition to the original intent of the nineteen seventy-eight council and property owners' agreement. In addition, some two thousand-plus downtown business customers, as well as over one hundred downtown business owners and property owners, have signed petitions against this amended ordinance. Please revert to the original ordinance number fifty-four seventy-nine and amend it to do away with the meters on Sixth and Seventh Street between Kansas City Street and the railroad tracks.
Three. I'll ask you if you could just wrap up your comments.
I'm done.
Good timing. Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Clancy Kingsbury of seven fifteen Main Street.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Clancy Kingsbury, I'm the owner of Who's Hobby House on Main Street downtown. Um, I have a question first. Um, before, with meters installed, uh, is there anything to prevent people from parking there the entire day long and plugging the meter with money? I don't know if there is. Is there going to be a meter person that walks around and makes sure that that car moves? Is there anyone here that can answer that question?
Just, you know, typically this is time for public comment. We usually don't have a Q and A here, but we can, we can, one of the council members will probably bring that up.
If, if not, the parking meters is not going to help with employ, uh, employers and business owners parking on the street. It's going to be convenient. They're going to walk out. They're going to plug the meter, and they're going to stay there all day long. At least the way it is now, and I don't see a problem with parking downtown. I think it's better than, I've seen it since I've owned the business for over fifteen years. Um, I think maybe we do need some parking ramps in the future, but I don't know as taxing our customers that are coming downtown and trying to spend money in downtown businesses are the way to do it. Maybe the way the business owners and property, property owners in the seventies did it, they taxed themselves, said, we need to improve our parking downtown. The business owners and property owners paid that. It wasn't our customers, especially in these times that we are in right now, in the economy. I see it every day. People are on budgets. They're watching what they're spending. Are they going to be concerned about putting money in meters? Yeah, they will. And so I think just for the city to spend over a million dollars to put parking meters in these areas downtown could be a very big mistake, and I think we need to look at that before it goes any further. Because we can always do it later, but if, once we spend that million dollars, if it doesn't work out, well, that was a very big mistake. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Jerry Freed.
Thank you. I'm Jerry Freed, Fifth and Main downtown, and I believe there's going to be coming forth, uh, this evening, a suggestion for the original plan with a substitute amendment, and, uh, we would support that. The original plan with what I believe will be coming forth this evening called the substitute amendment, and we would support that definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freed. We also have a speaker request form from Barbara Schrader from, let's see, seven oh nine Hanover from the Global Market. Barb, did I get your name right?
You did. You did good. Um, thank you for holding this meeting for us. Um, I just want to say that I, I will support the substitute amendment. The other, putting the meters downtown in the core is just going to cause more chaos. Um, as business owners, we really don't know what to do with everybody feeding meters, because that's what will happen. People that have parking passes already park in front of all of our businesses because they don't want to walk those two blocks. So feeding the meter fifty cents every two hours, that's really not a big, big deal to them. So I will support the substitute amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We also, I, I assume that there is going to be a proposed substitute amendment because we've had two people refer to that. Okay, okay. I'm seeing nodding heads out there. Okay. We also have a speaker request form from Hanny Shaffey at five twenty-eight Kansas City Street.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Hanny Shaffey at five twenty-eight Kansas City Street. I'm involved with the, uh, or actually, I'm the owner of the, uh, half a block on the north side of, uh, Kansas City Street between Fifth and, uh, Sixth Street, except for the, uh, most eastern seventy feet of that block. Uh, we have meters on Kansas City Street, and, uh, currently we have been changing our tenants to, uh, service-oriented tenants. We have almost ninety-eight percent occupancy in both buildings along that street, which are about approximately forty thousand square feet of retail space. Those tenants actually are not too happy with the meters on Kansas City Street. Similar to the folks on Main and St. Joe, I really do believe that meters are a hindrance to the businesses that those meters are located in front of them. And even with the half-hour or two-hour or what have you, we have tenants that come in or customers that come in that don't have the change, and they are sometimes not knowledgeable enough with the downtown, especially those who come in from out of town or what have you. In my business, we have a cup with quarters that people utilize. My tenants on the second floor or on the third floor, they don't have that ability, and their customers don't have that luxury. So therefore, those meters really create a headache for them. Currently, you folks are proposing meters on Sixth Street, which is the other side of the buildings. There are no meters on that side right now. We have tenants that sell, for example, the ballet shop, which the lady, you know, is a single mom, I believe, and, uh, she's trying to make ends needs, e- ends meet. And, uh, by putting meters in front of her, her business, those ladies or, or people who drop kids off to try on clothes or what have you and leave, that meters will really create a problems for them. So I urge you to apply the same standard for Kansas City Street, similar to Main and St. Joe, and I really do support the request by the folks for not installing meters on Main and St. Joe. Most of the folks who come into Main and St. Joe in the summer are people from out of town. Selling them a, a parking card from a chaos, which they probably don't, have never been into Rapid City before, looking for a chaos is going to be a problem for them. Finding the exact change to utilize that meter is going to be a problem for them. That will really create a problem for the downtown, and people are not going to be utilizing the downtown as much as they should. We all know the economic situation that we currently live in. We need to encourage the people of downtown to succeed, and the only way to do it is actually not tax them anymore. If you want additional funds to build future structures, there are ways to do that. And even if you have to put in additional real estate tax, and credit those folks who already paid for that tax to create additional parking, you know, those folks who paid for seventy-eight nineteen seventy-eight, they should not pay again. People like me who did not pay, I'll be more than happy to pay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And just a point of clarification, uh, paying a parking meter is not a tax. That is a fee. There's a difference. Taxes, you don't have a choice. Parking meters, you do have a, I, I just want to make that clarification. I always, I always get a little bit frustrated when people start confusing the difference between a fee and a tax, and a good example is water fees. When we talk about water rates, people aren't paying taxes. They're using water, so they're actually, uh, getting a service, so that's a fee. Taxes, typically you don't have a choice. Let's go to John Brew from Impressions Rubber Stamps.
Thank you. I'm John Brew from Impressions Rubber Stamp. I've been a small business owner in downtown Rapid City for fifteen years. Matter of fact, this month is my fifteenth year anniversary. Um, I would also support this, the forthcoming substitute amendment. Uh, I am concerned with the fact of people plugging the meter and parking and camping out, is what I would call it, in front of the businesses in the downtown core area where we depend on those, uh, spots to turn over for our customers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Michelle Polling from Alternative Fuel Coffee House.
Good evening and thank you. My name's Michelle Polling. I have Alternative Fuel Coffee House, which is at six twenty Main Street, and I also support the substitute amendment that's going to be proposed tonight. That substitute amendment asks that we go back to the original parking plan, extend the no-meters onto Sixth and St. Joe, and ask for a parking manager to have someone, one person that we can go to with our issues for parking. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Jenny, and I'm not even going to attempt your last name, Jenny, from Fierce Modeling. If, if you could just identify yourself for the record, please.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Jenny Gastrolin from Fierce Modeling. I'm the coordinator there, and I will, I support the substitute amendment as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Mike Brumer from Armadillo's Ice Cream. Again, Mike, if you'd just identify yourself for the record, please.
Yeah, Mike Brummer with Armadillo's on Second and Main Street. And, uh, once again, like we said, everybody, thank you for your work, and I'm not gonna read what everybody said, but I, I really appreciate what you said, uh, on, ask the businesses, you know, we're the ones that are supporting the downtown, have made the decision to support our downtown, and I've been there for fifteen years, and, uh, we've, we've, we've done this so that we could have an, uh, an avenue for the people that work downtown to not have to drive very far and come and, and frequent our establishment. Um, we don't have any problem with parking. It sounds like everybody I've talked to and listened to on the, that I've talked to on the board, that it's an employee problem, and all we're doing is shuffling employees from one place to another by different parking meters, and where can I go to get a better advantage and park in front of somebody else? Deal with that issue. Deal with employees and parking in front of other businesses. We're far enough downtown, we're on Second Street, that we don't have that problem down there. The credit union, they, their employees park where they're supposed to. Um, the Karumi Mall does. Our employees park in our parking lot. So we have plenty of parking, and we would be totally against having meters down, anywhere downtown, especially in front of our place, because we have a lot of business that goes in and out, and our customers, the reason our business is successful is because it's, it's the accessibility, the ease of parking. And if we can make it easier for downtown, getting the employees out there, maybe that would be the, the answer to it. A lot of people don't carry the change in their pockets. They're going to come through, they're going to see it, they don't have, they're going to drive and, and go to a different business. We need to make it convenient for us to want to come downtown and spend our money instead of going to the mall or going to some other places which are convenient for us. So take those into consideration and really look at the businesses, because you can't drive us out of downtown, because then you won't have a downtown. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Bill Keslov, ten fifteen Twelfth Street.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alderman. Uh, I strongly support the substitute motion that you're going to hear. I think it really addresses the, the economic times of today. It addresses the, the needs of the shoppers. It addresses the needs of the downtown merchants. I think it addresses, uh, all the issues that, that it's been dialogued about. I think tonight, after you hear the substitute motion, hopefully your decision is going to be really easy, because I think most of the people out here in the audience, the substitute motion addresses all those needs, as far as I can determine from all the meetings that I've attended. So I would encourage you to support the substitute motion. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Barbara, and I'm not sure if it's Poyer, I'm not real sure, from, uh, Paws Pets Bakery. Can't quite read the, you write sort of like me. If you could just identify yourself for the record for you, please, Barbara.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Parr, Parr. Um, I'm at six oh seven St. Joseph Street. We have Paws Pet Bakery and Gifts and Mount Rushmore Birds, and I'm here to say that I oppose parking meters downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We also have a speaker request form from Julie Fry of Roger Fry's Paint and Supply. And there again, Julie, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Julie Fry, Roger Fry's Paint and Supply. Thank you, Deb, for resetting that. Um, I would like to thank, first of all, Deb Hadcock for proposing the amendment that caused all this, and the seven council members that also agreed with her that this was not fair. Um, I also would like to say, my father's not going to speak tonight because he's, he's had it, so I was elected to do this. Um, if you, if you could, I'm, I'm assuming the proposed amendment, which it would have been nice if somebody would have come up before everybody was talking about it, if we would have actually known what it was. I'm assuming it was the one that we had all talked about, and Dad had went to the last meeting, that was going to include us, our area and motions, and, um, Sixth, Seventh Street, correct, with no meters, and we appreciate all that. And we were thinking, that was great. But then, after talking to somebody, they reminded me that that still was treating us special and not being fair to everyone in downtown. And so it, it wouldn't have included Charlie and what, Benusis, and I can't remember, everybody who, who it wouldn't have included, the amendment. And, and we all tried, I think we did try. But it's still, I think if we're supposed to be a united downtown, we need to be all treated the same. And we are a retail business. I'd like to thank you, because you actually pointed out some good questions to this gentleman here. Um, nobody talked to us, to the retailers, um, on Sixth. I, I'd still like to know who on the roster that you asked, if there were seven people, who these people were from St. Joe and Main. I'd like to, I think we should all know who they were, who gave this input. I still think there shouldn't be a lot of credibility given to the research, because when we were at the Elks Theater, I had asked who had actually contributed to any of this data that you guys got, that determined who got meters and the length of meters. Not one person in the crowd had raised their hand. So none of us downtown business owners that I know of, unless it was a select few, none of us had any input to it. So how could this be a credible research and data? And it, and it hurt, I, I don't know if I should say this, but it kind of hurt my feelings when I heard him say that you got, they determined who got two-hour meters, four-hour meters, whatever, ten. We were lucky enough to get ten-hour meters because we weren't a prime business. But how, how would you know we weren't a prime business if you didn't come down and talk to us and find out what our needs were? I, I mean, in all fairness, you said that St. Joe and Main were prime businesses, therefore they didn't need meters. And, and who determined that we weren't a prime business or any of the other people weren't? So again, if So again, if you could maybe scrap some of this idea, or have a new, a new research thing, give a list to somebody to, every business is downtown, and have somebody talk to each person, and get more of a credible, okay?
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. And thank you to the members who are keeping, helping us with this. Thank you.
Mr. Brewer, I'm going to skip you ahead a little bit. Are you the one who's going to present the substitute motion?
I guess.
Okay. Why don't we hear that, so everyone knows what the proposal is? Unless there's any, is there any concern from the council by doing that? Let me ask, and if we need to take a vote, we can, what's the preference of the council? Do you prefer to actually hear the substitute motion, or do you prefer... John was, in all honesty, but John was two more down. He wasn't, so... Let's take a couple lights. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little bit perplexed by how this transpired. If we knew that there was going to be a substitute motion, and there's people that have already spoken, and they don't even know what we're talking about, this meeting was called so we could have an open, honest discussion about what's going on. Then all of a sudden, we hear there's a substitute motion. If we knew about this ahead of time, I think that would have done us a lot better and behooved the people that have already spoken. They may have something else to say once they hear this, so I'm hoping that would give them another opportunity to speak after this substitute motion, because it seems like there's probably the last four or five people who've come up and said they, that they support a substitute's motion, and I have no clue what it may be, or who would make that motion, or if, you know, I'm just a little bit perplexed and maybe a little bit disappointed. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have more comments after we hear all the speakers, but I think what I've been, and I'm starting to sound like a broken record here, but what I've said all along is that somehow the council needs to hear all of the information presented from the public and take that into account, and then bring that information to a council level, separate that discussion from council discussion, and then the council have discussion based on this. What I'm hearing now is that there's going to be a substitute motion, and I keep hearing that term, proposed from the floor?
Put it this way...
The process, the process, no, let me finish, Mayor. The process is getting backwards here, in my opinion.
Just a reminder.
I understand you have the gavel, but you said I had the floor.
You do, sir.
The process...
But, but, I want to make a point of clarification. There cannot be a substitute motion from the floor. The chair would not allow that.
I understand that, but not only is the public saying that, we have council members now saying that. So the process, in my opinion, is flawed, in that we should listen to all of the information, whatever that information is being presented from the public, and take that in. As I said after the September meeting that we had, at some point, we need to divorce that comment from the work of the council in terms of working on all of the issues that the public brings forward. And we're not doing that. We're being, we're going to be asked to, on the fly, make a decision about a substitute motion that I don't know what other council members have heard, but I haven't heard it. I have, no one's contacted me and said, well, this is what we're going to do. Not that they have to contact me, but if I'm going to be asked to vote on something, I'd like to at least know what that is, understand how that impacts the overall global plan of downtown. And somehow, I think we've gotten off track, that this isn't about a parking plan anymore. This is about meters. And that's not sustainable long-term. That's not what we should be talking about. We're talking about what's best to build a downtown that's vibrant and that's healthy long-term as it relates to parking. This is about meters.
Okay. I'm going to go back and ask the question here. What is the desire of the council? Do they want to hear about this? And I will tell you, I haven't, I haven't seen the proposed substitute motion either. The question is, it was referred to multiple times here, does the council want to hear about the proposed, I assume this is the business owner's proposal? Or do we continue to go through, and Mr. Brewer, I'll tell you what.
Mayor, I'd like to hear all the comments.
Okay. What we're going to do, we will go back to the order. Mr. Brewer, you'll be third one down. There's no sense in, there's no sense in arguing procedurally. Mr. Powell from Red Wing Shoes is next on the...
Good evening. My name is Tim Powell. I'm from Red Wing Shoes. We've been downtown for a little over 40 years. And I guess, I don't know of any retailer that is in favor of having parking meters in front of their business, anywhere. I've never heard anybody talk about that. And you folks have heard, a few people, talk about the problem being downtown, some of the employees and business owners downtown. I've argued for a long time that the best way to address the downtown parking situation in an effort to make it a real good viable business district is to continue chalking the tires, two-hour, two-hour parking, and implement the graduated parking plan, the graduated fine system that was in the original proposal. And I believe that that is your best ultimate long-term solution to addressing most of our, frankly, complaints over time. There has been a couple of meetings of the downtown merchants that have looked for something positive to offer on the table, and it sounds like we didn't do a very good job of telling you that we were coming with that positive answer, but I hope you'll, you'll appreciate it when it comes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Kurt Weitzel.
Good evening, council. My name's Kurt Weitzel, 817 Ninth Street. Guess first and foremost, I'd like to just remind you that I've been asking for two-hour meters since this process started a while back, and I still, I still have 10-hour meters in front of my building, and it's not acceptable. I am in support of a parking plan downtown. I know there's been a ton of work that's taken place. I think it's pretty suggestive that what's going on here is, you know, we're trying to generate more revenue to support parking meters or ramps, and we're looking for ways to do that. I think there's been a lot of thought that's gone into it. If it came from everybody, I don't really, I don't see that. I think kind of what's going on here is, everybody doesn't participate. Everybody doesn't have a clear voice, and I do appreciate all the time that you guys have given us and given us a chance to get up and speak, but I know there's a lot of silent people out there that don't always get informed. I'm in favor of sharing the cost. If everybody is going to benefit from the parking meters, it would seem to me that everybody should, or I mean, if everybody's going to benefit from the ramps, that everybody should also pay the fee. And if it's through taxes, or if it's through parking meters, or whatever, that's the direction I would go. I was asked if what we're going to do with the downtown parking meters in Kansas City that we were just purchased, is our plan to throw those away and start over? I know we spent a lot of money on those, too. And that's a concern. And you know, as I sat here and I thought a little bit about what's going on, I really appreciate Ron and Malcolm's comments, and Deb's, and Aaron's. I think that, you know, the substitute motion that I'm excited to hear about is kind of, you know, I haven't been in on a lot of these meetings, yet I've been at every one of these council meetings, and if they're not asking me, I feel like I'm out of the loop. And certainly, if I'm here voicing my opinion all the time, but nobody's asking me, I must be, not be on the right side of what's going on. So, let's move on to the substitute motion. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a speaker request form from John Brewer.
Yeah. Do you want it on the... That paper on the... Yeah. My name is John Brewer. I'm with Destination Rapid City, but I'm here as spokesman for meetings that took place over the past week, from last Friday night through this afternoon, by downtown business people trying to put this together. So, we don't, I don't come here tonight to propose the amendment. What we were looking for was some common ground so that we could talk to the council about the parking plan, because I agree with Councilman Chapman, this shouldn't be about meters, it should be about parking plan. Our organization is trying to bring vibrancy to the downtown district, and that includes economic development of jobs. Part of this parking plan is what we need to attract another 400 to 1,000 jobs over the next three years, and it's a big part of what parking does for you, and we need a plan. So in response, since I have three minutes, I've passed out for you. I'm sorry, JJ, what did I do? I did it backwards. I'm going to, I'm going to go through this a little bit. This is offered through discussion with the group with practically as initially proposed, a non-metered core area. It's described for you in that first paragraph, and then the map that is behind on your diagram actually has the color legend for the meters on there. It advances all the way to Kansas City Street on Sixth and Seventh, a non-metered zone, and proceeds north to Apaula Street on Sixth and Seventh. Otherwise, Main and St. Joe, the other areas are as originally proposed prior to the amendment at the last meeting. What I want to show you before on, or after that, on the amendment, is revenue calculations based on the proposed amendment in this document, which, at your discretion, you can decide to make from the diastate. Revenues from the new parking plan as proposed in this amendment would be 523,300. That number is on the third sheet of that packet that you received and was calculated by Monica Heller at the City Department. That 516,000 would be enough to service debt on $6 million of bondable funds. The 2012 parking funds are 2.8 million, and we propose at 850,000 to buy meters and install, leaving 1,950,000 in cash. Lease revenues from the spaces that could be built from those two amounts are 500 and, I'm sorry, I'm reading, 65 spaces.
John, that'd be time, if you could just wrap up your comments, please.
If you would notice that that would generate another $3 million. So under this proposed substitute amendment, over and above what you saw in the previous PowerPoint, you would have nine mil, or 10 million, 950,000 of additional bonding capacity.
Thank you.
And then the points are down below. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Greg Wick, 725 Kansas City Street.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Greg Wick. I'm president of Pennington Title Company at 725 Kansas City Street. You've heard me speak several times regarding our need for the eight spaces in front of our business to be two-hour parking. That was the understanding that we had previously when we undertook our expansion project. We constructed 39 parking spaces in our lot, 22 of which are for employees, the balance are for clients. Some days, that's not enough. I am here to respectfully disagree with my friend Hanny, who had to leave, as far as removing the parking meters. On our end of Kansas City, they're required, particularly with the expansion of the DALL and the expansion of the YMCA. Without parking meters, we have people that will park in front of our business nearly all day long, leaving no room for real estate brokers, lenders, the public to come in and refinance or buy or sell real estate. So, I'm very much in favor of two-hour parking meters as they are now and as they have been in several of the plans. And I appreciate everyone's work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Mike Conven of 617 St. Joe. Mike, is he still here?
He's gone, Ellen.
He's gone? Very good. Okay, we also have a speaker request form from Jack Mihatchek. I'm going to have a hard time pronouncing this one. John, can you help me out here? How do you pronounce your last name?
My name is John Mihatchek, owner of Roam and Around down at 616 Main Street. We are not in favor of meters downtown. I think there's different ways that we can come up with different plans if we just kind of all put our heads together. I mean, we've got a lot of intelligent people in this room and downtown. We can come up with some different ideas to create revenue, so, thank you for your time.
Very good. We also have a speaker request form from Bridget. There again, Bridget, same last name, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to attempt
Good evening. My name is Bridget Mihatchek. My husband and I own Roam and Around Travel Store, which is located right next door to the Firehouse Brewing Company at 616 Main Street. I'm just here to say that I'm in support of the, I'm not sure if I should call it a substitute amendment, but the information that was provided to you by John Brewer. I also want to say that I have been extremely fortunate in my life. My background is geography. I've traveled extensively domestically, as well as internationally. One thing I don't see, parking meters. Parking meters are an old-school concept, that it is my belief is taking Rapid City backwards, not forward. And I, I just want you to really think about whether parking meters are the way to go for the future of Rapid City. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Chris Johnson of The Clock Shop.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm Chris Johnson. I represent, and I own The Clock Shop downtown at 625 St. Joe. A lot of the discussion leading up to this meeting has been revolving around revenue. And a lot of the justification for putting meters downtown, especially in the retail shopping core, is about revenue, so that we can eventually build a parking ramp. I would just like to remind you that, I don't know the numbers, but I believe collectively the downtown retail business core represents a very significant amount of retail sales and of sales tax revenue, which funds a lot of things in downtown, in Rapid City, including, I believe, the 2012 fund. You're hearing a lot of comments, and you've heard some comments about a substitute amendment and the previous amendment, but regardless of any of that, you're hearing a unified voice from downtown that we are opposed to parking meters downtown. I would ask you not to consider this as opinions of several downtown business owners, because we are the eyes and ears of the shopping community. And I'm asking you to consider our opinions as a, the opinions of thousands, literally thousands of customers who have come to our door expressing their abhorrence for the thought of parking meters downtown. Please do not sacrifice sales tax revenue so that you can get a minuscule amount of revenue from parking meters. It's our livelihood, it's the, it's the will of the public who shops in our stores, and that's what we're trying to represent. We're not sitting here trying to tell you what we think we should have downtown. We're simply expressing the thoughts and views of our customers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from William Newhouse, Evergreen Office Supplies.
Owner of Evergreen Office Products in Rapid City Downtown, 811 St. Joe. Boy, after hearing a few comments, I have a few things that probably change about what I will say, but one, just kind of in respect to the 10-hour parking. If I was an owner that had 10-hour meters going in front of my spot, you'd kill me. I'd just close up shop and go someplace else. Now, that's not being proposed in front of my spot, but I'd feel for the people you're doing that to, because you just, you just cut their throat. Now, the other concept is, is how many times do people drive by because they don't have 10 cents to run a meter? How many times do you not stop at a business? They say, oh, it's only 10 cents. It's not the 10 cents, it's the fact that I don't have it. I don't have it in my vehicle. I work downtown, I deliver downtown, and I sell downtown. And I have numerous $5 parking deals because I didn't have 10 cents. Now, how many times do I not stop someplace and shop because I don't have 10 cents? A lot. What you're telling me is you want to encourage that as a continuous basis. If you think people don't shop because they don't have change, they don't shop because they don't have change with them. They just go somewhere else. And in my case, I've got an office depot down the street, and I realize it's not your job to help him or me. job to help him or me, but it's also your job not to make sure that he has a major advantage over me, just because I happen to be stuck in a downtown area. And I don't see being in downtown really a benefit to me, it's really a negative. I'd rather be someplace else, but that's where I'm at, that's where I'm invested, that's where I own the building, that's where my business is. We've been there for 40 years. The next thought being, as I understand from Greg's point, he said, you know, the meters over there protect his business. And it really comes down to, he's being protected because the YMCA overfloods, and I realize YMCA has its own set of rules, whatever they got, but that's really a parking problem due to what the YMCA did. His business is, he's asked for meters to protect himself from what's happened there. That's a parking plan that occurred, that created its own problem, and that's something you guys need to look at your own solutions for. The last part of it is, I want to encourage you guys, just because you put a lot of hours and labor into researching something, if it's a dumb idea, it's still a dumb idea.
I'd say thank you, but I'm not sure if I should. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your comments. We, last speaker request form we have is from Kelly, I think it's Thomas, I hope I pronounced that right, Kelly. I think I've, I've probably butchered it two or three times now.
Hi, I'm, been sick, sorry. It's kind of sexy if I was on the radio, though. My name is Kelly Tumis, and I own motions at 628 Sixth Street. One of the things that I wanted to say is, most people that know me, I'm a pretty happy, go-lucky person. I am fortunate enough to have a business that I work with very lovely children, one of them, which just left. And usually when people come to visit my store, they're in a good mood, and I have a really loving, believe it or not, client base that are like family members to me. And that's the way I run my store. So, I got to thinking, I'm trying to figure out why the heck I have gotten so darn mad and have been so angry about all of this. And I think part of what I realized is that, for me personally, I moved downtown because I liked downtown. Growing up in Texas, most of the downtowns are dead. They're boarded up, dead, and I liked this downtown. It was cool, it was quaint, it's in the centrally located, it's a good, I felt it was a good place to be, and I wanted to see it thrive and grow. I guess the reason I've been so angry is because when I leased my building, I had two-hour free parking in front of my store. I planned on being a long-term tenant in the building in which I rented. I didn't want to go to the mall space. I didn't want to be in there because I like artsy downtowns. A dance store fits nicely in that atmosphere. But what I kind of feel like, and what I feel like most of the people here might not realize they feel the same way, is we as business owners who have been in our locations, have been happy in our locations, like to stay where we are, have been somewhat dealt a parking situation and we have, that we have no say-so over. We have, no one, like I've said before, has ever come to my business and asked my opinion on how parking meters would affect my business. And that makes me very angry, because I feel like I pay rent in a downtown in which I love, in which I would like to see thrive and grow, but I have no say-so over. And that makes me very angry, and I think that's why I've gotten so mad about all this. But, you know, 'cause, and, and like I said, I've come to the meetings that I've known about, and I've said things too about my situation and the way that I feel, but I really just feel like it's falling on deaf ears. And I think there's a better solution to what's being happening. The only other thing that I have to say is that you talked about, Hanny kind of was, yeah, maybe parking is not a tax, but I already had this on my notes, you do generate sales tax revenue from us. And if you, I realize that, if you, people have a choice of paying at a meter and not paying at a meter. I don't think they'll make the choice to pay at the meter, and I think then you will ultimately lose tax from people who diligently try to bring you tax and revenue, and so, in a way, it is kind of taxing us, so, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Kelly. We also have an additional speaker request form from Kurt Small, 512 Sixth Street.
My name's Kurt Small. I own the Elks Theater, 512 Sixth Street. I'm up here for two reasons. The first is, I am a board member of the Rapid City Downtown Association, and after several meetings and discussions, the board was in favor of the parking proposal before the amendment that came on with, that included meters in the core downtown. As a business owner downtown, and I've been down here since 94, I agree with Clancy. I think the, some of the parking issue is a little bit of hype. Business is good downtown, and a real parking problem is when all the parking spots are empty. And I don't envy the task of the council to try and sort all this out, because you've got so many businesses that have different needs, and it's an unenviable task, and I wish you all good luck. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We have no more speaker request forms. We want to make sure everyone, Mr. Sefner, did you wish to speak? We'll give, try and give everybody the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm Dan Sefner, downtown business owner, property owner. I think I've been in front of this a couple times before. My comment is, if I could interview everyone on the council, I would like to, one at a time, I only have three minutes. I've been downtown 32 years. I have lived it, I feel it, I know the growth of it, and I know what we, I don't know what we need to do, but I know this, we need to make a decision. I do not feel for one minute that I am stuck downtown. I love downtown. Downtown is our heartbeat of Rapid City. So we need to move forward. We cannot live with overreaction. We need some results. We can't table this, we can't keep, we can't keep postponing things. I have to support our amendment for downtown Rapid City. We, I do not support meters on Main, St. Joe, Sixth and Seventh. We need to do something. Can we review it? I hope so. Can we review it annually? I think so. But, my heart is here. I'm not stuck here. I can leave anytime I want. I don't desire to do that. Downtown is the wagon wheel of downtown, of Rapid City. We have Rushmore Crossing, we have the mall, we have all these things surrounding us. However, we have a downtown that has potential beyond what we have seen in many, many years of downtown Rapid City. We need to support it, we need to make something happen, and we need to move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sefner. Anyone else wish, I do not have any additional speaker request forms. We want to make sure that before we close the public comment period, that we give everyone the opportunity to speak. Does anyone else wish to speak? Only once, twice? Okay, very good. I, sure look for motion to close the public, thank you. We have a motion, second, to close the public comment period. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in, did you, okay. Hang on a second. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hatcock.
Just a discussion on this proposed amendment. How many people, at this point, did anybody want to speak on the proposed amendment?
When we do this, we don't have an amendment on the floor yet. Let's see if someone's willing to offer it, and then we'll, then we'll take it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to, uh, let's see, we're gonna vote on the motion to close the public comment period. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with one no. Very good. We have closed public con, period, so now we are to council discussion, interaction, so let's go to Alderman Lloyd Lacray.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. You know, I was one of the two that didn't support putting the meters back downtown. I didn't support the amendment. And, and I, I want to thank you guys all for being here tonight, because now you kind of got a, a chance to see what the council goes through. This is our 10th meeting, and I'm sure you guys have talked plenty on this. In fact, Ms. Rice's mind has changed from the last two meetings that I've, I've listened to. And, you know, one of the things that come forward was, that we didn't know from the last meeting, was that the downtown area was assessed a levy for parking back in 1978. I did not know that. But I did know there was, there was problems back then with parking, and that's why we took the meters and so forth, and so that was good information that did come out from all this. You know, what I see with some of the problems that we're having with the communication, we've sent out two written notices of the meetings to try and get all the input on this and people to the meetings. We have a wide variety of people downtown. You know, we have the people that lease the buildings, and we have the building owners in, and building owners look for long-term visions of what downtown's gonna be, and sometimes the, the leasees don't know that, because they don't know if they're gonna be there from one year to five years to 10 years to 20 years. They don't know that. And so we have different visions for it. But I did look into, once I had gotten, found out about that levy, I'd, I'd asked, I'd emailed Monica for a substitute motion on, on trying to come up with that, and I never really got a response. I don't know if my email got lost, or I, maybe things got confusing. But, what Mr. Brewer has, has brought forward is, was more along the lines of what I was looking for at the very beginning. But I just want to say, you guys have all worked hard on this, and I think maybe this started out wrong. You know, I, after reading some of the, the information from the past, things started out, when you, when the 1978 started out, they had a vision. They had identified areas that they were gonna put the parking at, and you had that vision. And, and with this, we have parking plan, parking ramp as the vision, but not where, and how many, and so forth, and who's it gonna benefit here, there, or so forth. And maybe we needed that first, and then to go to the revenue part. But it seemed like we went to the revenue part first, and then it rolled over into more revenue, we needed more revenue, and fairness, and so forth. But with all the information that's brought, brought forward, I'd, I'd like to support, and one of the things I do believe, and I will ask staff to put it on legal finance, is I think we do need to do the parking manager and, and parking committee set up. And for that, the reason why we need those is exactly what you guys expressed here tonight, is that I support the original plan without the amendment. This way, the businesses can go to that manager and to that committee and say, this isn't working for us. What can we do different? And we can get faster reaction than having to come here for 10 meetings, or come to the council to, to ask for the change, and I think that would work much better. And so, we will add that to the next legal and finance committee meeting for that, to get that rolling. But with that being said, I, I would like to, to make a motion to accept the original parking plan and put a substitute, substitute amendment.
What, what are you trying to do there, Lloyd?
The original, well, the original parking plan, I'd like to amend, exclude the amendment that was put on it. So that, I'd like to have the amendment to include a two-hour non-metered zone with graduated fines on Main and St. Joe Street, from Ninth Street to Fifth Street, Main Street between Fifth Street and Fourth Street, and Sixth Street and Seventh Street between Kansas City and Apaula Street. That would be the substitute amendment that I'd want on the original plan.
Okay. Jason, I assume we should probably treat this as an amendment? Okay. Okay, just for point of clarification, let me see if I can wrap this up. You're reading, I, I assume what you're proposing is, is the language that Mr. Brewer moved forward?
Yes.
So I'm gonna give everybody just a minute to actually read that, and JJ, would you please put that up on the screen and circle it? I want everybody in the room to understand what the motion to amend is. Can you zoom in on the top if you would? Peek in a little bit. Yes, go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm assuming that the amendment is being construed as making adjustments to the, the zones as identified in the ordinance, and not to any of the funding mechanisms that are identified on there, on the document that Mr. Brewer presented. None of those items are properly before the, before the council tonight, only the ordinance itself, so changing the zones is the only thing that's really appropriate.
Right. I assume that's the intent of the motion maker?
Yeah.
Okay, hopefully everybody can see that. There we go. Jim, can you circle that? Okay. Now, the other thing, we're gonna see how good you really are. Give everybody a chance. Now I'm gonna, is Mr. Brewer still here? Okay, I just want to make sure I'm getting this right. It, what it appears is, this would be the original plan with the inclusion of two-hour no-meters on Sixth and Seventh, both north and south of St. Joe and Main. Am I getting close? Up to Kansas City Street and down the railroad tracks. Now, Rory, can you put up the map? Now that everybody's had a chance. Okay. Mr. Brewer, sorry, I'm not gonna let you talk. I just want you to nod yes or no. Okay. So I'm making the assumption that this, we're back to the original plan, but Rory, can you cir, circle Sixth and Seventh, both north and south of Main and St. Joe? Is everyone clear on the amendment? So, the amendment would be, and I'm gonna ask for a second here, and yes, I've been delaying to ask for a second until everybody was sure what the amendment was. The amendment would be to, in essence, go back to the original plan, but extend the two-hour non-metered, both north and south of Main and St. Joe, to Kansas, Kansas City Street? Does it go all the way to Kansas City Street? Okay. And, and also north to, because that's, that's not shown correctly up there, then. Clear the bottom two. Circle those for me, please, Rory. Okay. Very good. Everyone clear on the motion? Now I will ask for a second. Is there a second on that amendment? Okay. So now we have a, we have a mo, a, a ment, motion to amend and a second. So we'll have discussion, and just please keep in mind, now that we're on amendment, everyone will be given an opportunity to speak twice, because we're on a separate main motion. And once we get back to the main motion, if we need to, then we can look at suspending the rules to allow the people to speak. Okay? Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I disagree with the motion that's on the floor. I'll start off by saying that. I think this is a terrible way to try to make public policy on the fly by circling things on a map up here, and then having the council somehow come to some decision, which is a huge decision that's gonna impact not just downtown, but all of Rapid City. I, as I've said before, I think that we should hear all of the concerns, and then bring this to the council, set up tables right down there on the floor, and have the council do all of this work here. I, I've heard several times that council members have said it, and that the public has said it itself, that a lot of work has gone into this, and they've done a lot of work on this. I don't discount all of the work that's been done on this. It's time now for the council to do some work, and I don't understand why we would It's time now for the council to do some work, and I don't understand why we would shirk that responsibility and not roll up our sleeves and get down here and come up with something that could be best for Rapid City. There's still folks who are sitting in this room tonight who have come forward and said, "This does not work for me," but that's okay, I guess, with us because we're not listening to them. We just want to listen to those that have the majority of the numbers here or those that have the biggest voice. I think that's a terrible way to make policy. I don't know if meters are the best thing for Main and St. Joe or the whole of downtown, but in my opinion, this council has not had an opportunity to sit down and look each other in the face and say, "What's best down here?" I think this is an easy process to create. I don't think the outcomes or the solutions are easy, but I think the process is easy. We should take all of these things into account, roll up our sleeves, go to work, put the plan that the council comes back out with based on everything that we've heard, run that through the normal system like we would, which is legal and finance and the city council meeting, and the public then still has an opportunity to come and make comments on what we've proposed. Here, we're trying to do something on the fly. I think that that's bad. I've assumed and maybe wrongly that through the surveys that were done and all of the public discussion and the last round of 2012, that parking structures are needed downtown. I thought that that's what we said through all of those processes, that we need parking structures. I think the question is simply, if that's the case, then how do we pay for them? I don't know if meters on Main and St. Joe is the best way to pay for them, and I'm not advocating that. I'm advocating that we, as a council, take control of the item and have discussion just amongst the council, like we do every single night. We have a council meeting. The public gets to say whatever it wants us to hear, and then at some point, we take that item and that item comes to the dais and then that becomes a council item. We're not doing that in this part of the process, and I disagree with that. If I'm wrong and there is a need for parking downtown, parking structures, then I think that we showed poor leadership in terms of how we're getting to that end. I still have concerns about residential meters in front of residences downtown, that $15 versus $40. I have concerns about that. I have concerns about the folks that have come forward and said, "10 hours doesn't work for my business. You'll kill my business if that." We haven't had discussion because we've made this into a meter issue and not a downtown parking plan. I keep hearing that we can come back next year and visit this. No, let's come back right now and visit it. And if we've been waiting 30 years, Dan said he's been down there 30 years and 32 years and it's been, it's been an issue, then let's roll up our sleeves and do something that's sustainable, long-term sustainable, that we don't have to come back year after year after year and visit. I disagree with the motion on the floor. I hope my colleagues voted down and that somehow we take this issue and come and have meaningful discussion and roll up our sleeves and go to work and then turn out something that's better, not just for certain businesses downtown, but that is, that works for the all of downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree wholeheartedly with what Malcolm Chapman said, without a doubt. Looking at this proposed amendment that was presented to us tonight, you know, I'm not sure how they got to that point. I can certainly understand them not wanting parking meters on Main and St. Joe and how now they included parts of Sixth and Seventh Street. I don't know how they come to that conclusion, especially when there's business owners downtown that have been to every council meeting that repeatedly are having 10-hour parking meters put in front of their place and have said that will not work for us, and they didn't even listen to them. They just come forward with a proposal for Sixth and Seventh Street. This whole thing is, I don't know, this is, this is not going to work for me. I'm certainly not going to support this motion. You know, we need to sit down and digest this, but there's no way that I myself am going to vote on something that is going to put four-hour meters in front of someone's business or 10-hour meters in front of someone's business just for the purpose of having the employees, and that's the purpose of it, of Main and St. Joe be able to park in front of their business so they cannot do business. That does not make sense to me at all. There's no way. We've had many business owners downtown on Main and St. Joe say they're really, at this point in time, is not a parking problem. They have all said it's employees and employers. And to put 10-hour parking in front of someone else's business so that they can have their spots taken up, they're trying to make a living too, and they're probably paying just as much in sales tax and property taxes as the individual on Main and St. Joe. I'm sorry, this plan here, at this point in time, does not work for me, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'd like to give Charlie Ray and Mary Arinka and Kurt White soul about 20 minutes to go out in the lobby there and come to forward with their own amendment or proposal. To say that this amendment or proposal just came forward tonight, this looks eerily very similar to what was proposed a week ago. I'm assuming that somebody knew about this coming forward tonight, and I have to agree with the other Aldermen up here. We didn't get anywhere with this. I think, I feel like we slightly got hijacked in the fact that this had been known ahead of time, had this been known ahead of time, some of the other people who have consistently came to these meetings that have 10- and 4-hour parking meters in front of their meter. I'm a business person too, and I got to say one thing to anybody who signed off on this proposal, if your business was in Kurt White soul's business, would you take this deal? Absolutely not. So we didn't, the council people didn't bring this deal forward. I woke up one morning and read it in the newspaper. We're here to help you guys. And I think of all the people that I've met and all the business people that I've spent time with downtown, I understand. I'm here to help you. If you don't want a meter, then so be it. If you don't have a parking problem, so be it. But come forward with something that works for everybody, not just yourself. It's, I'm a little disappointed in the fact that we're even at this point and getting hijacked by coming back to a substitute motion that basically takes one person off because his business got jacked up with four-hour meters in it. And I feel sorry for that person. I don't think, I don't think this plan works. I think there's a lot of questions that this council needs to roll up their sleeves and be honest with each other and say, you know, how does the resident thing at work? The 10-hour thing, four hours, competing businesses. There's places downtown that I know that I would locate my business at because across the street, there's no competing businesses. So they don't have to compete for the same amount of parking spots as somebody at, say, the coffee shop or the firehouse or one of those places who are surrounded with competed businesses. I think these things have to be taken into consideration. I think we have to get off the political soapbox and be honest with these business people that don't want the meters. I understand that. I don't have a problem with that. If that's what you want, I'm fine with that, but let's, let's, let's come forward. This is a plan that I thought came from the downtown itself. Obviously, it hasn't. There's a list running around here with the people that were on this last committee. If you want to read it, it should be available to all of you folks out there, just like this amendment should have been made available to these people that came here earlier, who are going to spend their time and my time talking about trying to find solutions for downtown parking. I believe, and you've probably read in the paper, that there, it's more of a perception than anything, but a perception does become a problem. It does. I don't know if people want to, you know, hear that or not, and when you talk about parking problems and in the newspaper, all the notoriety that you're getting right now is not doing you any good. I'm looking, you know, I look in the Main, the YMCA area, Mr. Wick's area over there. He wants the meters because he simply wants turnover. Everything that I've read on meters, and I'm not trying to make this a meter situation. If you put the meters up, they turn over. But you can convince me differently. I've talked to a few of you folks. It's your businesses. It's not mine. But I'm not going to put meters in front of somebody else's business if you don't want them yourself. It's a clear and simple solution to me. The areas around YMCA and those areas need parking. There's $2.8 million available. Downtown people don't want that parking ramp. Let's move that parking ramp over into that other area and build a parking ramp there for those people that really do have a problem. I've driven through those areas several times and they have a parking problem. We don't want to take the downtown employees because specific business owners cannot control their employees from parking downtown. There was a comment made earlier about downtown. I think everybody in here is probably fairly comfortable with being downtown, and they're downtown for a reason. And there is a niche in our, in our society for, in this city, for people to have their businesses downtown. But I guarantee you one thing, folks. If you locate your business downtown, you don't have parking, so that's understandable. When my wife was looking at locating her business, she could have moved it downtown or she could move it to a strip mall. $15 a square foot versus $5 to $6 a square foot, simply because of the difference of parking. So there's a, there's a cost that's involved here. I don't think in the long run that we've taken enough time to really look and see how this affects the businesses individually and differently. I've heard people talk about retail and they don't want the parking, they don't want the parking meters. I understand that. It's your business and I'm not going to try to run it for you and I'm not going to try to make decisions that may affect the health and wealth being of your business. But don't come and propose something that says, "We don't want them, but we're going to give them on this other person over here and make his, make his business deteriorate because he's not in the core or wherever he may be." I think there's opportunities to make this thing work if we take the time to talk honestly about it and not get hijacked by a proposal that nobody else knows about. So that'd be my comments for right now, and I hope this conversation becomes candid at this point. Thank you. Otherwise, we'll receive and get nothing done.
Thank you. I'm going to just talk a little bit about procedure because there's been a number of comments made that somehow this amendment is hijacking. I think that's, I don't think that is an accurate statement. The reason I say that is, is any council member up here at any given time has the ability to make any substitute motion or an amendment to the main motion that's on the floor. Exactly that was, very similar that was done at our last city, special city council meeting dealing with parking. There was a motion made. None of the information was distributed ahead of time. That is the privilege that any member of this board has, is to make an amendment and to debate it. Let's go next to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the young woman who said she was awake at night about this one, she and I are the same. I've been wrestling with this a long time, not as long as Mr. Kroger probably, but ever since I've been on the council, this has been a part of the discussion because it came up almost immediately with 2012. And during the 2012 process, you know, there was money set aside for a parking ramp. And throughout the time that I've been on the council, that's been a part of the process. I supported that measure as a 2012 project because I believed what I heard from the community with, that the city does need additional parking and parking structures are the best way of having that happen. As I look at this parking plan, and I do agree with Malcolm, it's not a meter plan, it's a parking plan. What we're trying to do is make and support a vibrant downtown. And those of you that are in the audience know that I shop downtown and I love downtown. When I first came to Rapid City, I lived on Columbus Street. I think one of the saddest days was when they cut down the trees on Columbus Street and took out the white boulevards for me personally. I recognize though progress is about change. So as I look at this issue, the number one issue for me was, how do we provide that additional parking? And I don't think we can look at this five years or 10 years. I think what we're talking about is a process that is going to affect our community, our downtown, in the next 20 or 25 years. And so I'm interested in getting it right. The two groups of folks that worked on this were in city center revitalization and I chaired that committee. I know a little bit about who was on the parking committee. There were lots of discussions about parking and how we solve that problem. So in addition to the fact that I believed, and I think I still believe, that for the long-term health, the 20 and 25-year health of downtown, there has to be additional parking structures. So then the next question becomes, how does that get paid for? And I've said this before in jest, but I mean it in all seriousness, there's no free parking. Somebody pays for it. So the question, who is that somebody? I regret very much that in all the years that we've talked about this, that I've served on the council, I'd not heard about the assessment process. That was a new element, and that is a fairly recent element. Because in addition to the fact that I believed we needed a structure, we needed a way to pay for it, I also think fairness does enter into the discussion. And so as I've looked at it, those are the important things that I thought needed to be discussed. I'm listening to my colleagues tonight and I am in agreement that we don't need to push, I don't believe this should be tabled because I believe this is on everybody's front burner. And when you have someone that's, an issue that is now high on everyone's radar screen, that's the chance to really try and solve the problem because everybody's paying attention. And I believe everyone is paying attention now. I would look to my colleagues as to how we continue this discussion. Malcolm has offered the opportunity to have the city council itself sit down and wrestle with how, what it serves best. I know that early on, five years ago, when we talked about this plan, the plan that was, the idea was, let's have something to look at. It's pretty hard to say what the plan is if there's nothing on the table. So that's where we started, putting something on the table. Tonight, we have something on the table. And I guess I would look to my colleagues and perhaps to the mayor to say, how could we continue to take a look at what is on the table, but allow the council the opportunity to wrestle with this in a way that perhaps, as Malcolm suggests, around the table, the same way that we work on the budgeting process? Because I don't think it's a big rush to finish this. And the reason I don't think that is because this is a long, for me at least, this is a long-term decision, and we will make the best long-term decision with all of the information. And I think we are increasingly close to the information, all the information. I will say this in addition. In my view, there has been a lot of public input this, in this, into this plan. It is true, we didn't survey every single person, but we've held a lot of public meetings and time and again, we've said, "Step forward. Tell us what you think about this." And we have heard a lot of information. And now I do think it is, it would be a good thing to do. So I would guess, I would look to my colleagues to say, "I did second the motion. We have something to look at, but I don't think we're married to whatever that is on the table currently if that's not the best solution." So I would say, I would certainly urge that we take this to the kind of council opportunity to sit around the table and really wrestle with this, asking questions, trying to figure out where everyone is and the most fair way of handling this issue. And those are my comments. And I would ask maybe the mayor if he has a suggestion as to how we go about this. The one thing I should say is, for those of my colleagues who are, who want to get something done immediately, I've lived here a long time. Some of the best things I've had, happened at my house came about because I looked at it for a long time before I did something. I don't think this is any different. A good look never hurts anything.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
A lot of good comments tonight from the crowd and from council members. I've been in this process since we decided to give on the municipal infrastructure committee from 2012, 2.8 million. And I went to planning commission, council, downtown revitalization, and then to the task force. And I can tell you, the whole time, I always can take more discussion and I always could take more public input. It's never bothered me to get more information. What I'm looking for is for the best, for the, or for a healthy and a vibrant downtown and to make sure it stays the heart of our city, with that be putting meters in, taking meters out. The main thing we need to look at here tonight is what's the best solution. I can tell you from doing all these committees, I haven't seen one. I've seen what other cities have done and we had brought forth as a council, what other cities done because there was a goal in sight here when we first started these committees for parking. It was for revenue and it was for ramps and parking areas. What the goal forgot was all the areas. It's from East Boulevard, West Boulevard, Columbus Street, I think, to North Street. It's the city center. We're looking for the vision for 25 years or 30 years. We're not looking for the vision in a little piece of that area. I know we need to start somewhere, but I truly believe from being downtown and being one of the downtown advocates for changing the plan for parking, it's going to take us all and it's going to have to be a unified plan. I don't believe it's a unified plan. I don't believe it's a unified plan. I think both sides, what you did is turn one against the other. We don't have to do meters, but show us something that's going to be an assessment or something that's going to make a difference for what's happening downtown. The city council is trying to find that solution. We throw an amendment on here, which I appreciate the hard work, because we asked, some of us, to find a solution on Main and St. Joe that would help. They came up with this, so they did what we did. They did the same thing. They tried to find a solution, but again, and I keep telling people, you forgot everybody in the unified plan. It's about all of us. It's not about meters, it's not about just revenue, it's about what's going to be best for 25 to 30 years in the vision for all of us. I guess when I was looking at the vision and the revenue, it was on Main and St. Joe, that we would get some retail space and we would have some extra money, that 2.8 maybe, or use that TIF to build something there. And then the main area that I've seen since I've been downtown is over by the Y. Use the 2.8, you've got the Black Hills Corp., you've got some major players over there that probably could use that and cut down some of those other areas on the west side. If you put these plans together and you get your heads together with all the players, and I truly believe, all the players have not been in this, people have said they were, I've been in these plans. I've been down there, I've been walking around for four years. I've been trying to make a difference and so has this council. We've worked hard. We are not trying to ruin your businesses, we are trying to find a solution. I don't think we've found that solution yet. I think there's even better solution here. And Malcolm's right, process, procedure, and policy. What's going to work best on those issues? Not throwing something forward as amendment, because now we can, like someone said, put some people out on the outlining areas, out for 20 minutes and bring theirs forth. I truly believe we've done a lot of hard work, but I truly believe we have not found that solution. If it takes two more years, is that a bad thing? If we come up with the right idea and we find a unified downtown and we take care of the people that actually are taking care of that area and we make them all unified players and they feel like they were part of that process? I know sometimes we think by sending cards and doing things, we have done that, but sometimes I don't think it always works. I've called many, whether it be residences or business owners, I've been in the process and they still don't know. I think Malcolm's had a great idea. I'm sorry that people have thought that we should go forth because we've worked hard and this is what we should do. I don't think we should stop this process. I think we should still go for that solution. I think it's a great way to do it and I think on this amendment, I won't vote for it. I'm going to vote for a unified plan that when we come together, we can come together as a team and this team is understanding that this is what the vision is. What is the vision? Is it just ramps? Because if that's what your vision is, I don't think we're going to take care of the future. We need to find another anchor store, put some more parking, put more parking on the west side, take care of the east side, and make sure this unified plan is going to work for all. That's my solution. And I would hope that we can continue this and figure this out with the council if that's what need be, to make sure all the players are taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to, I'm going to skip over, Alderman LaCroy spoke, so I'm going to go to a couple of people that have not had the opportunity. I'm going to go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
I think the amendment that was proposed tonight might be a workable amendment, but I need a chance to process it and understand it, including the revenue assumptions and dollars that were put behind it. Who calculated the revenue numbers for the, for the 4809 plan, for tonight's plan? The spreadsheet that's on the back of the amendment, was that calculated by, that was calculated by city staff? Okay. And the, the map, the April 2009 map also appears to have been done on the same software as the February 25 map, yet neither the map nor the revenue assumptions nor the amendment, which was drafted by city staff, was, none of it was provided to the council until tonight. And the council didn't direct for that, for that amendment to be, to be done. So I'm not saying I oppose the amendment. What I'm saying is, is I, I need a chance to process it and understand it because the mayor indicated that he hadn't seen the amendment, several council members haven't seen the amendment, and the amendment and the new map was created with the assistance of, of city staff and it wasn't provided to everyone, all the participants until tonight. And I know that there's well-intentioned folks involved in this. I just, well, my concern is, is that the way, the way the process has gone down tonight is not conducive to a, a good discussion and being able to make a decision because this information was not adequately provided ahead of time. If this amendment passes tonight, there would then be pressure to pass the amended motion, which I believe that there's still fundamental flaws to that, that also need to be, that also need to be addressed, including but not limited to the $15 for owner occupied and $40 per, per renter. And I, I just, I think that we need to have another meeting on this. I, I do not want my no vote on this amendment to be characterized as being in favor of, or of endless continuance of this plan. I think that we do need to move forward with, with a, a solution. But I am not ready to allow this amendment to be ram-rodded through so that second reading of this ordinance can be approved tonight. I think that that is grossly unfair to the process. And if, if it is, is now the case that council members have the ability to make amendments whenever they want, I do believe that they do have the ability, but to get this kind of staff support without the rest of the council knowing or the mayor knowing, I think that is a concern to me. So I do not want to be criticized the next time I ask for hours of staff time to work on an amendment so that I can bring it forward to a council meeting for consideration. Because if this amendment passes tonight, I'm going to ask for a couple of more maps that talk about the, that addressing the incredible unfairness of the, the parking near the library and also Mr. White Soul's property. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to, just make sure I got everybody. Let's go back to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy for a second time.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I didn't realize it was going to be taken as, thrown out as an amendment, which is the shock and so forth. I was prepared tonight to come here not to support the, the current, the original motion with the amendment on it that was done up to the last special meeting. I wasn't going to support that. I was going to offer an amendment to, since we received the information that, that downtown area was levied to pay for parking, I was prepared to take those areas and leave them the way they were and keep the plan the way it was set. That's what I was prepared to do tonight because we've all discussed that. You know, it's all, that's the original plan and we've all had plenty of time to look at that. Me adding this motion, amended motion, was not to throw anybody off guard. I don't know about the rest of this information. I haven't seen the, the downtown public parking plan and the revenue and all that, that type of stuff. That's a totally different deal. That's second part of the agenda that I have no idea about. But I do need, I do think we need, you know, Malcolm makes a good point, you know, a couple of times, meetings ago, it was asked, he'd asked that council leadership sit down and go through this. And I wasn't so much on board with that because we're divided on that, just like the council's going to be divided on what we need to do with this. You know, and the best thing that's come out of Destination Downtown was, you know, we need a parking manager and a parking committee. That's the best thing that's came out of all of this, is that we need a manager to come back and say, when we, you know, how much revenue are we getting here? Where's our parking problems? Where are they at? So we know exactly where that, these people out here that you're putting 10-hour meters on, is that going to affect them or is it not? You know, we need to identify where the areas are. Because if I go down there and look, I guarantee you, what I see is the problem is over at YMCA and over in that area, that's where the parking problems are. But that's the time I go down there and that's the time, each time we go downtown, it's a different time unless it's the busiest part of the day. So, you know, I don't have a problem with a roundtable meeting where we sit down and try to hash this out. If we do that, we're going to need more information, I think. You know, we need to have the revenue that's, that's generated from the two-hour parking and you get a $5 fine. We need to have that revenue set up. And, and how do we know the surrounding area's makeup of what the parking is? If we say we're going to push them out by putting 10-hour meters there, how do we know? I mean, really, how do we know? If they're not parking out there now where there is no meters, how do we know it's going to change? You know, these are a lot of questions that we need to ask. You know, I, I have no problem with continuing this on. We can continue this on for another year as far as I'm concerned. And, and working this parking manager and the parking committee, get them working on it so they can get the information and present it to us. Because I guarantee you, you know, as council members up here, every time we come up here, we're going to hear something different. Somebody else is going to say, "I haven't been informed, we need to do this, this has changed." We need someone to, to actually do the studying and bring forth the facts. And, and we thought we'd done that with two different committees, but then it's come forward that it's unfair. It was, it was stacked, one was, one wasn't, so forth. But if, if we do the parking manager and come up with those numbers, I'm in support of that. And so if, if this commi, if this council's ready to continue this on, I would, I would, I am not going to support the original motion with the amendment. I'll support this one to move forward and work with it if not. But that's where I stand on this. Because I, I don't, I do not believe parking meters everywhere is solving a problem either. Except we're trying to generate revenue and, and just for fairness, it just doesn't work for me because people downtown have already paid a levy back in 78 for it and, and this is like a double whammy, so, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hold on a second here. I made time out of my day and my time to come to talk to these people and move forward with talking about what makes sense in a parking plan. I'm not going to sit here and talk about continuing or making amendments that include 10-hour parking in those spots. It's very obvious that the downtown people don't want the meters. It's very obvious that if you own a business, I don't know how, how you cannot see that's not obvious, if you have 10-hour parking in front of your business, that, I was just rolling my sleeves up to go to work, so. That, we're making an amendment that doesn't really change anything except for the pieces on Main and St. Joe. I'm comfortable with that if those people don't want that. They don't think there's a problem. They're, they work their day in and day out. But we're not going to force a problem into an area that doesn't have a specific problem and businesses are the same. I don't care whose business they are, retail, whatever they are, if they're title companies or whatever, and some, there's particular problems over in specific areas there. If we don't come forward with a plan and we just keep talking about it, that's exactly what we're going to get. We're just going to keep talking about it. I'd like to throw out a couple of things to let my colleagues think about it and let the people in the audience think about it. There's some areas down on Main and St. Joe that don't have competing businesses across the streets from them, okay? And some of you do, and which makes an intensity in your parking areas there. And one of the things that I've heard concerns about as I've visited the downtown people was, you know, three, two hours sometimes isn't enough. There's areas that are viable down there to put three-hour meters in. If they don't have competing businesses, if they have but, open parking lots, then, then they should have meters in them. And they should have three-hour meters there. So it provides for some of the other businesses there to have viable options if they have someone, you know, waiting on their rubber stamp, or if they have someone waiting on a t-shirt, or if they have someone getting their hair done. These three-hour meters would, would provide that opportunity. And then you're keeping that in the area where it's necessary, necessary to have. The 10-hour park, I would, I would say we should eliminate that except for in areas that, that don't have competing businesses. Get rid of the parking in front of the, the houses that are, people are down there. The one concern I do have is, is the 15, $15 versus the $40 for parking. If someone's going to locate and live downtown, the thing that they're going to have to understand is they're going to have to pay 40 bucks a month to park. I'm sorry, I don't know what other way to do that. But to encourage people to continue moving forward with these projects, which are going to help the downtown, I think that these downtown people are going to benefit from this, need to figure out a way to find parking for these people. Because these are the people that are going to park, that are going to, that are going to do business in your business. So, and one of the alternatives is, is vertical parking. The downtown people evidently don't want the vertical parking. I know the YMCA in that area, they'll take the vertical parking. So we look at moving the $2.8 million of 2012 funds into another area and build a vertical parking lamp, eliminate the, the Main and St. Joe meters. They don't, the people that are operating the businesses and own the businesses don't want them. They're not concerned about parking in 10 or, or five, 10 years from now, so we don't force that on them. And we look at, you know, some graduated fines to help some of those people who continue to park in these areas understand that they're hurting their neighbor. I don't, I don't understand that, why that one business owner would do that to another, but that's the way it is. And it's hard for that business owner to go tell that guy when he's in there shop, shopping at some point in time, it's like, "Hey, man, you're taking up my parking and my customers have nowhere to park." It's unfortunate that business owners or other employees can't see the forest amongst the trees. So I'm offering up some options there. I don't think that, I mean, if we continue, I would, I would, I would continue this as long as there was a discussion and anybody who wanted to be there could be there and put, put in there what they feel would help their business at that time. And it's always been made, we have a parking manager, but the key to this whole thing making it work is making it flexible for the business owners. Don't handcuff them, don't blanket across, across the aisle with saying, "I don't want it, but I'm going to give it to you." That, that to me, just as a business person, doesn't make any sense. It's not a deal I'd take and it's not a deal that I would, it's not a deal that I'd expect to take myself, so, or have someone else take. So I appreciate if my colleagues would take some of those things into consideration. Look at some of the areas that don't have the intensity levels that the, the specific area downtown does and say, "Maybe we can put a three-hour meter in here and accommodate some of these businesses." Because the businesses I've visited, a lot of them had, one of the, one of their, if they could put on their wish list or whatever, was to have availability of, of three-hour parking. And there's a lot of businesses downtown that want the meters because they believe in the turnover, they believe that that works for them. So that gives them an opportunity in those areas for their clients to park two, three hours, whatever, and it doesn't burden the people who don't want the meters, who, who feel there's a, or understand, because they, they're the business owner, understand that that would do some damage to the level of business that they, they may have. So with, with that being said, I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm willing to sit here and hammer out this parking plan as much as we can to make sure that it doesn't happen again to the people out here, that they come back and we make all these changes behind the scenes and don't tell everybody and, and you come unprepared. I, I just disagree with that philosophy. I think that the reason we set aside a special meeting, and I think on the agenda, it was just two items on the agenda. I mean, I set aside tonight to work on it. So, I mean, continuing it and continuing it, if it's a short period of time and we're going to have some definite sleeve rolling up and some definite effort, efforts made to try to accommodate most everybody on an equitable situation, I can go for the continuance. But I want to make sure that my colleagues are aware of some of my thoughts right now so they can start thinking about them. I've spent a lot of time with the merchants downtown and I understand their plight. And they're downtown because they want to be downtown, they like downtown, they think it works for their business, the rents are affordable and, and it works for them. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. You know, when we had the meeting at Alternative Fuel, I read a little passage from a card that I had received and it said, "If we fail this time, it will be a failure of our imagination that we have not thought through and then put those ideas into action to make something work." I sat here and listened to my colleagues and I, I was hoping that I would hear some sort of withdrawal of the motion that was on the floor, but at this point, I will, I'm going to put a substitute motion on the floor. But I take notes. I took notes from the 26 people that spoke tonight. I take notes at every meeting, all of the concerns, the ideas that come forward, I will bring them forward. I think that- I think that they will come forward. At Alternative Fuel that Sunday, I heard six ideas that I hadn't heard before. The city should create affordable parking for employees downtown. If you spend over twenty dollars in a downtown store, maybe we should validate parking and it should be free. Graduated parking fines, double or triple up the leased spaces, celebrate the downtown successes that we have, that it is a huge success that we have a parking issue in this community. And then advertise nights and weekends plans like Verizon and these telephone companies do and talk about that and somehow steer people to parking at night and weekends, that there's parking and it's available for people. Those are all the ideas that I would recommend, plus what I've heard tonight, that we sit down here and we separate this issue again from the public. I would just ask if there could be some way that the public could still send emails, communicate with us if there's some other ideas. But at this point, I'm ready to put a substitute motion on the floor to move the, to move the second reading of this ordinance to a special council meeting, date to be determined, that we sit down here on the floor, much like we do at the budget hearings, and we work on this issue and we work through the issue without input from the public. But at the same time, to have people here, just like we do at the budget hearings, if we have questions, that we can ask questions. I know that's a long, convoluted motion, but I think you get the gist of what I'm trying to put on the floor.
Okay. We have a substitute motion, can I make a recommendation? And my recommendation would be to send it to a work, basically a work session versus a special council meeting, because when you actually call a special council meeting, there's always that perception or that ability to actually act on it on the fly there. If you go to a work session of the council, then everyone knows that it's gonna come back through the process.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to send this item to a special work session of the council with a date to be determined, is that correct? Okay, very good. Any discussion? We got a bunch of lights. While we do this, I'm gonna clear the board just real quick and I'm gonna let you turn your lights back on if you wanna talk about the substitute motion. So, let's go ahead and clear the board. Sure, as everybody keeps pushing their lights. Okay, okay, okay. I'm gonna go to, okay, I'm gonna go to Jason Green.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna clarify that the work session will be an official meeting of the council because we'll anticipate there'll be a quorum here.
Right.
But the agenda will not contain second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you.
So it won't be able to be approved.
Very good, okay. I'm gonna assume everybody has-
That's exactly what I said, Mr. Mayor.
That's, I'm pretty sure I heard you say that verbatim. I'm gonna go ahead and go to the lights, assuming that you wanna talk to the substitute motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Mr. Chapman's motion and I'll support it. If, as long as we have a timeframe and when we come up with some level of a solution that we have some means of giving it to those people ahead of time so they can beat it up a little bit before they have to come and sit here all night and listen to us talk, so, thanks.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Clarification on the motion. Can amendments then be offered at that work session? Because otherwise, we're going to be, I mean, can we actually do any work at the work session?
Okay, let's go to Jason Green.
If the ordinance is not on the agenda, then you cannot amend the ordinance. You can have all the discussion you want, you can come up with something that you intend to offer as an amendment at the subsequent council meeting, but you won't actually be able to amend the ordinance. You could certainly discuss it, though.
Can we, can we offer motions at the work session to draft amendments to come forward at a later time or, I'm trying to, the council is structured to offer motions to do anything, so how do we have a work session if we can't offer amendments?
Jason, I think you hit it right on the head there. You would direct the staff to draft an amendment to do X or Y, whatever it is that you wanna get done.
Amendment.
That would come back to the council for later action.
Okay, so the intent then of the motion is to allow at the work session motions to be made, but it just, the official attachment wouldn't happen until another vote later at a different meeting.
Right. Let me see if I can try this one. You certainly will be able to make motions. The only motion that you will not be able to make at that meeting is a motion to amend the actual ordinance because it will not be on the agenda. You'll be able to amend it, but basically, anything that you amend, the process would require that you take it to legal and finance and into city council for the formal adoption of those amendments.
Thank you.
Did I confuse everybody?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna go to Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, my intent and my thought is much like what we do during the budget hearings. I mean, we don't make amendments and motions that actually attach to the appropriation ordinance, but we get very clear on what the intent of that motion or the intent of that action would be at the very next legal and finance meeting or city council meeting. Much like what we do there. That's my vision for what that meeting should look like, with a ton of discussion from the council.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor if you want it. Very good, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm sitting over here and I've listened to parking meters, parking minutes, parking meetings and for the last four years, or three and a half at least. And I just can't believe that we, as a group of ten people, can come up with a plan that's gonna be perfect for everybody. It's not gonna happen. We can roll our sleeves up, we can talk, we can visit, we can do this until end of time and we're still not gonna come up with a good solution. Maybe, I don't know, maybe after the election, we could come up with a good solution. I don't know what the answer is. But what bothers me here the most is, is that I think we've lost perspective on what our roles are. To me, our roles here is policymakers, not roll our sleeves up, not to get down there in the nitty-gritty. First of all, we don't have the expertise and the talent. Maybe there's people here that think they do, but I don't think we've got the talent and the expertise that has already been come, that has been brought forward. We need to, we need to keep the big picture. We need to be able to sit back and let the folks that are involved with these things come forward with a plan. They did that. I think, in my heart of hearts, that we should approve the plan as originally brought forward with the changes that were mentioned today. I think we ought to pass that and remembering that this is not a static document. These things can be changed. If one business wants to say, you know, I really need to have a meter or I don't wanna have a meter, we should be, we have the ability to make those changes. If we're going to try to wait and make a perfect plan, it's not gonna happen. It's just not. We're too divided on this, on the council to make that happen. I'm thoroughly convinced that we should approve the plan we have that's brought forward, that Alderman LaCroix brought in, and then use the manager and use the system to make these changes that need to happen. We need to sit back and remember what our roles are. Our roles are not to get down there and fill sandbags. Our role is to sit back and be the policymaker and see what's happening. They've done that. Bring, approve this plan and use the system that's going to be set up, whether using the manager and using the parking plan committee to come forward with it and address these issues that have been brought up tonight. Whether it be where do we wanna put a parking structure? What do we want that parking structure to look like? How are we gonna pay for all that? Where are we gonna put, where are we gonna do this and that and the other thing? We cannot sit here and put the tables together and then come up with a solution that's going to be happy, that's, everybody's gonna be happy. It's just not gonna happen. So, I mean, we can do what you're gonna, I mean, I can count the votes and I can see where that's going, but it just, it bothers me to see that we're not keeping the focus on what our roles are and keeping the big picture and allow the system to work. I think we have a good system that was brought forward using the manager, the parking plan, and taking this as the starting point, what the, what the parking committee, the latest parking committee brought forward and let them act on it, get this thing started with the parking meters. And if we have to make adjustments, the manager and the parking committee can come forward with making the decisions and say, this is what we wanna do. This way, we can stay back and stay in the, in more of an objective role and not being in there in the nitty-gritty. If you're in the nitty-gritty, you're gonna see, you're gonna see a branch, but you're gonna miss the forest. We've got a good plan here, let's approve it and let the system work to make any necessary changes as things come up. I know I'm talking on deaf ears on a lot of folks, but it just bothers me that we can't keep the big picture and allow what happened, happen.
Thank you. Let's go to Patty Martenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep this short. I sort of agree with Bill O'Krepey's idea that the city council just needs to focus on the bigger picture of an overall parking plan. As far as the individual businesses being pitted against each other or whether they want the meter in front of their business or down the next block, that could be something that could be dealt with, with the parking manager. And he can bring forth any recommendations. They take their problems to the parking manager, we make the decision one way or another, like we do with almost any other issue. So that's, I think we just need to focus on an overall plan, whatever that is, regardless of who objects to it at that point, whether it's fifty-one person or five-hundred. And then let the parking manager deal with any issues in between blocks, in between businesses, and then have him come forward to the council with his recommendations.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask if, at this work session, would we be able to have the presentation that Destination Downtown had collaborated together? Because that seems to be an important, they took input and brought it forward and if they could give the presentation there to get, or get the information to the council before then, I would appreciate it. Otherwise, I'm in support of the original motion unamended.
Good, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recognize and appreciate the hard work that's gone in on this by everybody. As an engineer and a scientist, I understand what it's like to put in a lot of effort and a lot of hard work and still not see a viable solution. But the only thing you can do is to just keep thinking and keep trying. And I think that's, that the ten of us gathering together, that's just one step down that road. I agree that the solution needs to be long-term. One of the reasons I got involved in this council was because I wanted to do my best to ensure the future of Rapid City is bright for my generation and for my kids' generation. And it was brought up a couple of times, there is, people feel there is no parking problem downtown right now, but if we do things right, then we will create a parking problem. And I want to make sure that Rapid City is ready for that. And I believe we're on that path. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not a scientist or an engineer, but that was pretty well put, Aaron. I think that, I think that, I think the people out here would agree that they don't wanna be, have some stuff down their throat that doesn't work either. And if we spend just a little extra time to get it as close to right as we can, I think they would probably be happier with that. But there is one thing I'd like to challenge my colleagues with and that would be to read what the mission statement for the council is. And that is to treat everyone fairly. So if this plan had come forth and I believed it was fair, then I would have passed it that time. People can say what they want and I agree to a certain level that we are policymakers and that's an unfortunate part of our job, but also, our mission statement clearly says to treat everyone fairly. Whether your business is a retail business or it is a shoe repair business or a financial business. And that's what we're challenged with, guys. And so spending a little bit more time to get it right, I think that in the long run, we'll get it right. And I think that most generally, the people downtown will be happy with it if we just spend a little extra time to get it right. And I am willing to roll up my sleeves and if I have to and come down and work with the downtown people a little bit more to try to understand their businesses individually. I'm not smarter than you are, I never thought I was, and that's one of the reasons that this is, this is a fourth, and it's one of the reasons I'm gonna support continuing it, because I think that you guys run the businesses, you know what's going on downtown, you know what's best for your business. I'm not a firm believer in government intervention, but I am tasked with the fact that we need to be fair. And this plan is not fair in any way, shape, or form. Because I asked, I asked you people earlier, would you take the other side of that deal? And I have not one person say that they would. So moving forward, I just take a little extra time, get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an appeal to my colleagues who say that we're in the weeds if we roll up our sleeves and we get to work, that I would appeal to them that they would vote for the second, whatever the second or the first substitute motion that's on the floor. Because I think overall, what we're talking about, once we roll up our sleeves, is setting policy as it relates to a parking plan, not setting policy tonight as it relates to meters. And that's what we're doing. We are being myopic, in my viewpoint, of talking about just meters. And what we need to be talking about overall is a parking plan that's sustainable for a long-term solution. And I agree that when we hire the parking manager, whatever she wants to do, I think as it relates to making changes to the plan should be fine. So I think that I support all of that. But today, we don't have a parking manager and the policy still needs to be put forth. And I think that is our role as the council. So I would appeal to those that think that we're getting too much into the weeds, that they would vote for this for the betterment of the council so that we can come to some solution and have discussion about it.
Thank you. I'm just sort of curious who the she is. Okay. I thought you might have a name to recommend. Okay, very good. I do not see any additional lights. The motion on the floor is a substitute motion to continue this to a special work session of the council, which will be noticed and be open to the public. From my understanding, it will be work session only, so it will be the council doing its work, not taking public input, is that correct? Okay, very good. Everyone clear on the motion? Everyone clear on the motion? Okay. Well, it was asked about, oh, about an hour ago if I had any recommendations, so I'm gonna share just a few and I think they're fairly straightforward, I think they may help us out here. First of all, work session, I think, is a fine idea. When I was in the legislature, we used to call it grabbing the low-hanging fruit. What are the issues that there is no conflict or there is no debate over? And there's a couple I wrote down here. One was accelerated parking fees for the unmetered area. I think that is something that could probably be moved forward fairly quickly and I think it would help address the issue as far as employees parking in the two-hour meters in the downtown. It can be adopted separately from the overall parking plan. Couple others that were mentioned, the free parking on nights and weekends. Just so you know, we're already getting bids to put up the neon signs. I believe that within two weeks, we'll probably have a, I'm not sure if we, we have informal quotes right now, but the intent is to actually move forward with that irregardless of whatever this plan is, because that is, there's no proposed changes as far as the free parking in both the ramp and the surface lots on nights and weekends. So we'll be moving forward with those neon signs. The other thing was the parking manager. We've had those discussions internally for about three months now. I agree with that. And by the time we have this work session, I'll have some recommendations as far as if we want to hire a specific individual to do nothing other than being the parking manager or if it's something that we can incorporate those responsibilities in their current job position. And the last one is a long-term parking plan committee. There again, I think that will help because of the fact that it will pull some of the politics out of it. We can hopefully get some, some, what I would consider fact-based recommendations from that committee. And so with that, those are my suggestions. There again, it's not part of the motion, but if you're looking for recommendations how we move this forward, as proposed, the current parking plan is a monster. It's huge. It's all-encompassing, it changes literally everything we think about as far as a parking plan in downtown. There seems to be a lot of struggle with that because there seems to be a lot of debates about small proposals within that plan. Maybe the way to approach this is to, there again, grab the low-hanging fruit, deal with those things that we can immediately, and then basically take each one of the pieces of fruit and pick those off the tree as we come up to resolutions dealing with the public. So, with that, additional comments. Motion on the floor, there again, is a substitute motion to take this to a work, special work session at a date to be determined. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The public will be invited, though, but they just won't be, they won't be invited to participate.
At this work session, is my understanding of the motion is the fact that this is a work session for the council, very similar to the budget. So this is basically for the council to sit down and work out the issues and then there will be additional public hearings- hearings in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's go to Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have questions on your recommendations.
Oh.
Yeah, this neon sign. I've heard nothing about that. What's, what's up with the neon signs?
What we'll be doing is we'll be coming back to the council with a proposal to actually put some neon signs in the downtown area, both on Main and St. Joe, which will direct people to the parking ramp, into specifically the Fifth Street ramp. On nights and weekends, it will be on a timer, so the only time it'll actually come on is during the times that we have available free parking.
And when you said "we" put it together, who's "we"?
Robert Ellison, myself. We've been working on this issue.
Neon, huh?
Well, some kind of a sign.
Okay.
Flashing pink neon.
As long as there's some discussion. Yeah, flashing neon, pink, fuchsia?
As soon as we get the quotes and so forth, we will bring you, we'll be bringing that forward to Legal and Finance.
Okay, I would encourage you to consider signs other than neon.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, okay. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson. Some kind of sign each.
My comment would be, I would hope that maybe this, this date for the future might be not in April. I mean, I, next week, there, part of the council's going to be gone, and I think it's important, this is a very important issue. I think everybody needs to be a part of the discussion.
What we will do is we'll ask Kay to call around and try and get us a date somewhere between the next two and four weeks. Is that all right with everybody? Two and four weeks out? Okay. We do not have any additional lights. The motion on the floor is, let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
I just wanted to remind everybody, you're buying donuts in the morning.
Yeah. Thanks. Okay, motion on the floor is a continuation motion to forward this discussion to a work session at a date to be determined, and we will be noticing the media as of that date. Kay, we'll contact all the council members and find a date that works for everyone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with one no from Alderman O'Krepy, I believe. Is that correct? Okay.
You have to make the motion on second.
Yep. Alderman Quaker, could you read in item number two, please?
Item number two is to approve resolution establishing the fees, location, duration of meters to be installed in the city's meter parking zone pursuant to Section 10.44.020 of Rapid City Municipal Code. Move to continue, same as the previous item.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this, also to the special work session to a date to be determined. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. But for motion to adjourn.
Come over.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're adjourned.